Now. Regular meeting of the West Valley School District, January thirteenth, twenty twenty five. Citizens may comment on items appearing on the agenda when invited to participate during that agenda item by the board chair. Citizens may comment on items related to schools business not appearing on this agenda during the public comment portion of the meeting. Citizens, after identifying themselves, will proceed to make comments as briefly as the subject permits. Basic rules decorum and effect at all times. The chairperson may interrupt or terminate an individual's statement when appropriate, including when statements are out of order to lengthy, which personal privacy rights are abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or otherwise improper. The public should realize that this is a trustee business meeting conducted in a public one will stand. And to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, unbroken, indivisible, infinite, eternal.
Chairs up front, ladies.
All of that together. I have a couple of things. On that, on last month's meeting minutes, maybe.
Sure.
On that second page, it says the Strategic Action Plan Committee will start again soon. Thank you. As, as we are now in a period of accreditation, is. Is that what? I, I guess I didn't.
That's not part of accreditation. No, that's.
I didn't understand what that meant. It, because it says that, okay, we're under informational. Number three, the Strategic Action Plan Committee will start again soon as we are now in a period of accreditation.
So they're kind of, so what they are is related to each other. The strategic, the strategic action plan is something that we need to have as an ongoing document. In order to have our policies for, you know, especially House Bill two oh three.
Okay.
Like that. The accreditation piece is separate to that, but they, they do take a look at, at all of our documents with that. So.
Okay, so you want me to change the wording on that because we're not.
I don't think it's plain exactly what that.
Okay.
Maybe everybody else understands what it means, but I.
Yeah, it's pretty confusing.
We are now in a period of accreditation.
Yes. So I will just change it to say we'll start up again soon.
There. And.
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks. And then the other thing was on the last page. It was the adjournment where it said Laura, Laura at turn moved to adjourn and she also seconded the motion.
Yep, I see that.
I, I thought maybe.
I'll have to look to, I'll have to look at the. Video to see who did that.
Not.
I think typically Steph motions and Laurel seconds.
Okay.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you for that good memories.
Okay, so I'll make those adjustments.
Thank you.
That's the other way around.
The rest of us haven't looked really good. Is there any discussion? Always in paper. Post unanimous. If we don't have any correspondence, we don't have any public comments assigned. So we'll go on to the informational items. Recognitions and reports. West Valley PTO report. Do we have one? We'll be here for the PTO. All right. West Valley Teachers Organization Report. Have we got it?
Sent you guys an email with our intent to negotiate, but I just wanted to give you each a formal letter.
Oh, thank you. We're attached with always the community members and possible dates. So this doesn't, I just noticed that it's happening, but not particularly.
Yeah, not yet. Okay.
Very soon. Thank you.
I just wanted to use a few minutes of this time to talk to you all about the athletic field that you may have seen. We're going to fundraise for in the newsletter and an email my home. So we have a committee. We're talking about building our own football field in the back. Cause our practice field is a little short and all of our home games are at Glacier Practice Field. Been that way for eleven years. It'll also give a football field for PE across sports and anything else. So we're pretty excited. And we're moving forward with looking for sponsors and having a fundraiser dinner on February one, the second. And we'll have raffles in the silent auction there. Our initial goal that we think it'll take to build it is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So that is our goal. We are having our next committee meeting on Wednesday, the twenty ninth, January twenty ninth at four o'clock. And anyone is welcome to come that wants to kind of be a part of the dinner.
Okay.
Any questions?
Does that include bleachers or is that just two hundred dozen bleachers? Or two hundred and fifty?
Jennifer would be your, your committee member on the board that's been coming. So he knows kind of about. Everything you've been looking at too.
Yeah.
Yep.
Thanks, Terry.
Yeah.
Okay, there any further education for it? All right. Then go on to the superintendent's report.
Yeah. So I wanted to share some exciting news for our innovative tax credit program. So far, we're up to twenty six thousand eight hundred twenty five dollars turned in. Average donation is about twenty five hundred bucks. So pretty exciting. Yeah. So we really looking forward to taking advantage of that and really thank the community for stepping up to donate. That's, that's not a small chunk of money. It's really, really cool program. Wanted to touch base on just the timeline of the four day committee that we put together. And kind of go ahead and read some notes that I put in there and then go over the timeline after that. So the four day week committee conducted an extensive study on the potential benefits and challenges of a four day school week. Considerations included teacher retention, community feedback, operational costs, and the impact on student academic performance and well being. Community surveys were distributed, gathering insights from parents, teachers, and support staff, which informed the committee's recommendation. So that's where we are so far. And then last Friday, we sent out the kind of not proposal, but the committee findings that, that we had to parents and staff. And then this week on Friday, we will send out a survey to parents. Kind of get them some time to digest what was in the committee findings and then be able to kind of boy, not voice, well, you know, voice their opinion again. And then on the thirtieth, we will hold a community information session from five thirty to six thirty in the library. Here so that people can ask questions and maybe get a little bit more idea of what, what that means for our community. The four day committee will be, will be a part of that discussion as well. And then so far, right now, the idea is to then bring it in February. Largely, of course, depending on survey and what the mandate says after that. But yeah, the committee spent a lot of work on doing that. And I've always wanted to highlight that the committee was not put together in any other agenda other than to find information. That was definitely not something that, you know, we all went in thinking was going to be the answer or even possible. So. Yeah. Take a look at the findings if you haven't. You have to put a lot of work into that document. It was a huge team effort in that.
Did that go out via email or via text?
It went out via email.
Okay. It may be a good idea to send that out via text.
Yeah.
I haven't seen it. Probably just got buried in my spam.
Yeah, we did check on that and today and it did, it did go out via email to parents with the email that they have on Infinite Campus. But sending it out via text is also really good, really good idea.
I think there was like four emails that went out on Friday too. So that probably did it.
Yes, exactly. Yeah. Yep. I saw that too and wondered if that would affect that.
Yeah.
With the, the survey. Are we gonna recreate the, are we gonna adjust the questions? Or are we gonna kind of ask the same question?
It'll be the same questions. I think it's not going to be anything cultural. It'll be a lot shorter than the survey that went out in the fall. But it's just gonna kind of, maybe the wording of the questions will be a little bit different. You know, maybe after hearing this information and having considered options. But it'll be mostly the same kind of information.
I'd like one question to be, you know, if West Valley School shifted to a four day school week, would you, you know, consider or would you move your, you know, your child to a different school district? You know, then we could have kind of the, would you move or would you consider moving or would you stay or something along those lines? I think that's important. Context for us to get regards to this decision.
Absolutely.
Maybe, maybe phrase it a, what, do you still plan on sending your? Phrase it in a positive, like, do you still plan on sending your?
Still.
Versus would you send your kid, child somewhere else more?
Yeah, you can phrase it already. And then you can, you know. But I think that's something we need to understand. You know, the potential enrollment impact.
Yeah.
That is a decision like this could make.
Absolutely. So yeah, that's, that's kind of a target for us right now. And then tied into that is the calendar committee. So we're going to have to have two options for calendars at the February meeting. We'll have a four day option and a, and a five day option. To kind of decide, I guess, depending on what happens with that, we'll, we'll have to choose one and it's kind of coming down to time where we need to start doing that. So if we can get that one approved, that'll give us time to roll over things in Infinite Campus and give us more time to do that.
Yeah. One other thing on the, on the committees, the four day school week committees report. When you lay out the proposed schedule, you have kind of a, it's, you know, days in school, hours. And so if you do the math on that, it shows potentially like sixty less hours of school. I know some of that's non instructional time, but I think we should maybe refocus that table on kind of instructional hours. You know, you could do the schedule or you could do some sort of just add a line on that table to, you know, do instructional hours. I think would be important, you know, kind of, yeah, I know that was a proposed timeline, but that would be something important to highlight. Cause I think the.
Absolutely.
When you do the math, the kind of the inference is it's like sixty less hours, but a lot of, you know, a portion of that is lunches and recesses that, that aren't occurring. And so we should just measure that into instructional hours.
Sure. Yeah, that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah. Whenever there's like two numbers, I just have to do math.
Not everybody is that way.
Like, oh, I can multiply this by this and subtract that. I have to do it.
Well, thanks for doing it, Jeff.
I think it's important too though, cause like then you're comparing apples to apples.
Yeah, cause I, I think it could be misconstrued.
Right.
The way it's kind of laid out right now, unless you incorporate that. So I think that would be good added detail.
I think that's a really good, really good point.
You know, and that, and yeah. That's what I have.
Are we doing a presentation on a four day school week or?
No.
Okay. Were we wanting to discuss this further or?
I don't know if it's even necessary. It's going to be there at this particular time going down the road. We're going to have ample opportunity, I think, to discuss it. So I think with where it's at. The fourth informational item, let us consider that part of.
Yeah, kind of. Together.
Superintendent's report, that's the timeline in preparations to go over on February tenth. Pretty much he gave us what it's going to be then. And I think everybody just, I think everybody has to have a mission to, everybody is see, talk to them about it and ask them how they feel. Both school people who have kids in school and people who don't, so that we get a good feel for the community. Cause I am very concerned we get input from the community on this rather than just our school community. We need that whole community. So anybody we can, we can grow into talking about it in the grocery store with, or we need to. So we have an idea of what people are thinking.
Well, that's a good point, Marilyn, too. Is there a way that we can broaden the survey to include community members rather than just parents? I know we don't have. I don't, we don't have as much, you know, email information, but is there a way that we could do it?
I'd have to get some help on that.
Social media. I think we, I think we did engage community members on the general fund levy.
Throw it out there.
Fairly well. So that might be, you know, on that ad, obviously it'd be good to get a, an idea of, you know, who is responding and to get a feel from community members that are not parents, students.
Yeah.
As well as parents, students.
What interest do you think those community members would have?
A lot.
In a four day of school week?
I think they just passed the levy. And with that levy, they assumed that the school was going to, that they're going, it's going to go towards teacher salaries. And I think that this community really supported us on this. And I think if we, if we did turn around and right away to a four day school week, that, you know, the perception might be that that because we had never discussed a four day school week in our levy, any of our levy presentations. And it was not, it looked like a possibility, but so they just blindside people. That's never a real good idea. I'm not, I'm not sure if there will be any opposition. I just don't want to blindside people. You know what I mean? I just don't want this to happen and then have people in the community say, well, we have no idea that was going to happen. We need to just be really careful. We get the word out beforehand.
I think you could, you also, that captures grandparents or, you know, other relatives and things like that, or people who, you know, I think have opinions on education. Again, all, all our community members are funding the school. So, you know, they should have some input into how, you know, kind of critical decisions are made. But I think it's important to have the context of where it's coming from. Cause I think to a degree, you know, it's, if we want to, you know, it is the parents and the kids here, but you might have young, a young family that's, doesn't have kids in school yet, but they have, you know, pre K kids that are coming through and it's, they're going to be in the school soon. And they should also have, you know, be able to voice their opinion.
And I think the community feels some ownership in the school. You know, every, I, every time they drive by, they, they feel pride and, and, and certain ownership in what happens here. So I think there's a certain number that would like to think they had a little say in what was going on.
I'm sure we're going to need a levy down the road. So.
Yeah.
So I'm just wondering if you put out two surveys and one is to people that have students in the school and one's to the general community. And you get different results. Which one is going to hold more weight?
Good question.
But I think, I mean, it, it poses an interesting challenge. I mean, because truly, well, like when we ran the levy, it was class sizes, tech, safety, prepares to buildings. It wasn't teacher salaries. And so, I mean, other than just trying to keep the positions that we had. So I mean, I guess in that way, I don't feel like it was misleading, but I do understand the concern about, you know, passing the levy and then the shift to a four day school week in terms of like, you know, our families on board or community members on board. I mean, I think everybody has an important stake in that. I guess I would probably personally to value more of like what the parents feedback is, just because like they're the ones that are directly impacted. But at the same time, like I do think it is important to potentially like be able to expand beyond. It could be, I mean, the levy was something that I, people were more engaged in, but I feel like we get thirty community members that weren't parents. Like it wasn't, it wasn't a huge pool. So it would be interesting to see. And I think we left that open two weeks. So I'm just trying to think from like a data gathering standpoint of, how long are we planning, how long are we planning on leaving this survey open?
We were going to leave it open until the community roundtable.
Okay. So I mean, we would potentially have time and then it's just a matter of trying to kind of circulate and see what sort of responses the list of it.
Why just that? I think it'd be interesting even on, you know, like the, maybe the grandparents side, but again, like the, you know, it's a lot easier to, if, if a four day school week is impossible for a family to make work. It's a lot easier to have that four year old start at school district five than it is to change a, you know, take a fourth grader and shift him to school district five. So I think it's, you know, trying to capture some sort of idea of what the, the feeling is from the young, you know, kind of the young families that are potentially kind of growing into our school is something that we should try to understand. You know, as, as, you know, we consider this decision. So I think it's important to put it out there. And I think you may be right, Mark, on. Maybe create, maybe you can kind of click your, you know, current parent or community member and like have potentially maybe have a different path of questions.
Yeah, someone with a four year old kid versus someone with a grandparent or something.
Yeah. Cause I, I mean, I think just kind of trying to get a feel because it's, it's a extremely consequential decision for the school. And I think we need as much feedback from every interested party as we can.
I think it'd be just as simple as adding the question about, do you have school?
Yeah, yeah. Children enrolled at West Valley School. But we're not going to have emails for community members, right? I mean. No, it would just the same way that we had to do it the last time was just by like, you know, feel free to share with people in the community. The kicker then becomes like, how do you determine like who's in the West Valley community that wants to engage in the survey? And then who isn't in the West Valley community that may feel a certain way on the subject that still wants to engage? And there's only so much quality can control you can do around that. But I still, I, I agree that it's not a bad idea at all to put it out there.
Yeah, I agree.
So whatever we did it for the levy, how did you get those surveys to them? Send it to the parents via text, via email. No, but beyond the community. That, so that's when we sent it to the parents, we sent it via text, we sent it via email with the introduction of, you know, please share out into the community, you know, if you know a West Valley resident, please share with them. And then we posted it on social media as well. And so that was, that was where what I'm saying is like, you know, less than ten percent of our responses was community members. But it's still got us at least a little bit out. It's just anytime you're trying to engage the community in a broader way, it's really difficult to make that hurdle without sending a firm money to do that. That makes sense.
Yep.
Yeah.
Is there one that goes to the parents or that they restricted on who can reply to that one?
No.
So there's not really any quality control of that either?
Not really. No.
You know, without identifying who they are, it's really tough and you don't want to do that. So once you take that off of it, then you pretty much just kind of let her out there.
It's going to be unique though to one Google or Gmail address. Like it's not like they can fill it out multiple times, right?
But can they forward it to say someone else that's not?
Yeah, that's what she's saying. I mean, that's how it got out last. So we didn't, we, with any of the surveys that we've done, we have not tied it to them having to submit an email address because then that is tracking it. And we wanted them to feel free to share the information that they wanted to share without it being tied back to them. You know, and, and truly there's no way to really, unless we have everybody's email address on file, there's not a hundred percent way to make sure. It's just that sometimes when you ask people to share it out, it can impact like, you know, are they sending it to their relatives and Oregon? Be like, hey, we don't want to fill it out. But.
Do the best you can with it.
Yeah, exactly. Like regardless, it could happen anyway.
Yeah. Yeah, but.
I think you have to expect certain margin of error.
Oh, for sure.
It's just going to happen and you can't prevent it, but. The best.
Yeah. Best we can with it. All, all good points. So we'll work on those things.
Okay, thank you. All right. I need to go on to the action items. The approval of the bills.
Is there a certain way that we could get the bills attached to the the agenda? So we could have a little more time to.
Oh, sure.
Go for it.
Yes.
Even like a day or something.
I can do that.
The, was it twenty one ninety eight's lost check, like a check reissue? Is that, I'm assuming largely the expense plus a check fee to cancel it? Or is that two hundred and ninety dollars and eighty cents?
Uh, it was for a travel reimbursement check.
Okay.
That was mailed for an individual contract.
Okay.
Between parents and the school. And instead of going through, the option is, I mean, they were pretty sure they, it was mailed. They were pretty sure it was lost. So it said the option of doing an indemnity bond, which would not have cost them anything. They, they opted to do the cancellation and I told her that it would be less than thirty dollars.
Okay, got it. Okay.
It was a replacement check basically.
Okay. Okay.
No other questions, I'll make a motion to approve the bills.
Any discussion? All those in favor, in favor for approving the bills? Opposed, unanimous. Human resources personnel activity being poured.
There's three people on there. Terry's still here, she wants to talk about it, but uh, girls' basketball coaches, all halftime positions.
Did these go to committee, like in front of a committee? Did that happen at all?
No, these were not put before a hiring committee. Is that still in process to staff?
Yeah, it is. It's, the problem is finding, um, coaches, uh, who will do it. And usually there's, there's not a lot of extra, but we are gonna look at doing that, especially for next year. And as we go forward, it's gonna be less likely that we have that for cross country and things like that, but for the hiring process for next year, we're definitely gonna be looking at a committee model for that.
Can we advertise that like in our newsletter or, you know, other places?
Make a motion to approve the human resources personnel changes. Second.
Is there any discussion? My, all those in favor?
All right.
My, opposed, unanimous. KFC, prove the adoption budget amendment resolution to the general fund for significant enrollment increase, which is.
Yeah.
Maggie, do you want to explain that?
Well, I attached the entire letter from OPI and, um, the packets on doing a board budget amendment, but in depth, in January, I'm sorry, in December, we received notification of what's called SEI or significant enrollment increases, which, after we made our account, I think we spoke to it at another time where both Richard and I received two different calls from OPI, making sure that we actually had our number correct because there was such a large increase. And so, um, OPI has awarded us an additional sixty five thousand dollars for next year. Or, no, actually for this year to be paid out, um, to help cover such a, such a large growth. And so basically, this is a formality that we have to do in a budget amendment to our general fund, but I included the flow chart because, because it's a specific type of budget amendment due to signi- um, significant enrollment, we can skip the piece about advertising it to the public and everything like that. So like the flow chart shows you that we can just go ahead and right now in this board meeting, approve it. And then, um, it has to be done by March first. And then, um, once you guys approve it and it's signed, I send it to OPI and then they will send us our sixty five dollars.
Did you get what our A and B was just most recently then?
Yeah, sitting right now about eight hundred five. I think we made it discount. It was for eight hundred nine.
Point to motion to approve the budget amendment.
All second.
Is there any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? I, opposed, unanimous. It'll go on to D that, at the bus stop to the green route of Road Straw.
Yes, sure. So just really quickly, this is a kindergartner that we're trying to prevent needing to, uh, leave their house and then walk downhill in the snow to get to the bus stop. So if we adjust it to this address, then the kindergartner can just kind of walk right out in front of their house type thing and won't have to worry about, you know, ice being on the road or anything like that. And bus driver, I mean, says it's gonna be better for them, um, kindergartner and and so I would highly recommend just adding the stop so we can pick her up on the way rather than have her kind of just walk, you know, down. I think it's a little bit of a ways. So it'd be nice to to not have to ever do that.
I think the concern too is that they were, they were just beat. There really isn't a place other than a road for this child to walk.
Yeah.
I don't let my kids walk in Rose Row.
No.
Smart.
And after talking to treasure state that they said it was just easier just to go ahead and add it and the stop.
So this is an addition, so it's not, we're not impacting any other stops.
Right.
Originally, we were going, the parent was asking if we could because, but, um, in talking with Brooke, technically there is supposed to be another child at that original bus stop. They so far haven't been there all year. But we also talked to treasure state and they just said, let's just add it. And there's no financial implication. There's no anything. It doesn't, we just need to make it a stop and let it work.
Yeah, and then if approved here, then it goes to the county and then their transportation board approves it too at that point, or we'll look at it.
In the meantime, what's happening with this kindergartner?
I think that they're just picking her up.
Okay.
Because it's just a safety concern. It's not, yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve adding that up to Green Route one on one, Road Straw.
All second.
Is there any further discussion on that? All those in favor?
All right.
I, opposed, unanimous. It will go on the next, approve be Montana advanced opportunities grant. Nicole, would you like to share information on that?
Sure, it's, um, it's a grant, um, that OPI provides to middle schools. Um, and the only tie to the funds are that we have to use them uh, to be tied to career pathways or advanced opportunities for kids. So it could, you know, some, it can actually be six through twelve. So some high schools will use it for like CTE, but as a middle school, our proposal is that we use it to provide enrichment opportunities in kind of a block of classes. Probably what, depending on what happens with the schedule with our inter elective block where kids will be able to kind of choose which ones they're interested in. And we can use that money to offset costs of materials, coursework. One of the things that is required by the grant is that it's tied to community partnerships. So the courses will be required to have, um, either a community partnership where the community business or organization or service would come in or the students that have the ability to, um, go to that site. And those funds can also be used to offset those kinds of costs as well. Um, the total that we could get would be eight thousand dollars and, uh, just a good opportunity for us to get some funds to give our kids some other opportunities kind of outside of what we look at as a traditional type of curriculum for our classroom, so.
So we're not gonna get eight thousand dollars with your grant, right?
Yeah, and it's provided from, um, by the state of Montana through the office of public instruction. And it's renewable as long as we continue to renew it every year in the fall. We just have to provide uh, the information and accountability that we have used the funds correctly and you can renew it as long as they have the funding that's available the next fiscal year.
Do you have any, um, thoughts on like the community partners who you're thinking about? Are you kind of waiting to?
Well, the groundwork, um, that I put into the grants involves us, um, forming a committee, kind of a, um, committee that could apply to what kind of courses we wanted. Um, students will be provided a survey to see interest levels and which kind of things they're interested in. Um, and then staff members would also be able to, um, there was a survey for staff members that would also be able to provide information on what they were interested in teaching. Then, uh, those staff members would have to provide a course outline to be approved by the committee that would involve the community partnerships, but it can be anything. So it could be, um, it could be a bank, a bank, or it could be, you know, something in the trades where you had, uh, construction. I mean, it can be any sort of thing as long as it's tied to some sort of career pathway.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, that's interesting.
I'll make a motion to approve the Montana Advanced Opportunities Grant.
Is there any further discussion on that? All those in favor? I, opposed, unanimous. Okay.
Yeah. That's it. Thank you, motion to adjourn.
Second.
One of us should have motioned quickly to meet stuff.
All those in favor?
You broke our streak.
May your friends in the outlaw.
We helped reset tables?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
We have a, we should take a picture before we. Yeah, put it back up on there.